To order, Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll please?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kike Hill is not here yet. Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Mrs. Inteher?
Here.
I do expect Mrs. Kike Hill, she just be one of them. Mrs. Dahlquist, will you listen to the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there other modifications to the agenda that board members wish to make? Then we'll move on to recognitions and achievements. Mrs. Dahlquist.
Thank you. You may have noticed on the way in, there was some beautiful artwork on display, and we want to recognize that tonight. I also wanted, before we started, Jeannie Weisman is here. She's the reflections chair of the PTA Council. She's been organizing a lot of this, so I wanted to thank you for putting this together. Some of the recipients that are here tonight, we'd really like to recognize. I'm amazed by the talent that is out there. The use of color is just phenomenal, really great job. Our primary superintendent art award winner tonight is Hannah Wankler. She did My World of Animals, Animals.
Hannah, congratulations.
Our intermediate art award winner this evening is Trista Walter. She did Anprin. She's from Lowell, Carolina. Trista, come on up. One of our high school award winners is not able to be here this evening, but I did want to give Ally some recognition. Ally Octor was the artist of the tree piece that you saw outside. But we do have one of our high school award winners here with us this evening. Casey Pham, will you please come up?
That was beautiful. Congratulations.
That was awesome. Awesome. Beautiful.
I get to see it every day, thanks.
Thanks so much for sharing your talent. A bunch of that artwork will be here on display, and we will get to enjoy it every day. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Okay, are there any public comments on agenda items? No. Moving on then. Superintendent's report. Mrs. Dahlquist.
Thank you. It's been an exciting end of this evening. One of the things that I think is a really great indicator of a community and their satisfaction and their dedication to education is to watch some of the graduation and the promotion ceremonies. And speaks volumes that our high school ceremonies were very much full of dignity and grace, had excellent student behavior, had excellent parent behavior as well. You could just feel the room at both of the occasions full of respect and dedication to education. So that was really great to see. Also, wanted to talk a little bit about how staff reacted to the gas leak at Edison. It was quite exciting. Further complicated by the fact that we did not have power or phones. And everybody from senior leadership team really pitched in. We found people who spoke Greek in a moment's notice to be able to translate concerns to parents. Everybody at the Edison staff pitched in and were helpful with getting phones and messages and keeping everybody safe. All the time that I was there, I was impressed with how calm the demeanor was at Edison. But also, given that, we are going to meet with the officials from the fire department tomorrow so that we can go over what worked well, if there are any things that we need to learn for the next time. I've already had two school districts call me and say, "Okay, what'd you learn? What are we doing? How do we handle that?" So we're going to be sharing some of the things that happened with that. And then the last item that I would like for this evening, I'm going to turn it over to Joanne Panopoulos. She has a very exciting initiative to celebrate, and it's partnering with the DuPage Community Foundation. Joanne?
All right, thank you. To start, I just want to let you know that the DuPage Community Foundation is committed in providing support to local early collaborations. And with that, the collaborations do help to set up systems to provide students with kindergarten readiness. And last April of 2013, basically, Wheaton Warrenville Early Childhood Collaboration was chosen as the first collaboration to receive a $75,000 grant for us to partner with Metropolitan Family Services to provide these supports in building a community for our students. And this is called Bright and Early DuPage. So what I'm going to do is turn it over right now to Barb Spenyak, and she's going to share a little bit. You'll also hear from Teresa Nyho, thank you. And then Stephanie Farley and I have also been partners in this, and we'll just give you an update as to where we're at.
It takes a few seconds after you turn it on.
That's a lovely introduction.
Well, the DuPage Community Foundation is a not-for-profit organization that was established in 1986 to benefit the people of DuPage County. Our mission is to foster philanthropy, connect donors to area needs, and build community partnerships. And basically, what we do is work with donors to help them achieve their charitable objectives, and we also work with local nonprofits to help them better meet the needs of their clients. And then we work diligently with the donors to connect them to the needs in the community and to the causes that are important to them. A perfect example is one of our donor advisors has a specific interest in arts and music education. We connected her to School District 200, and she is currently in the process of considering almost $200,000 in grants to support music programs here in your district. The foundation has flourished in recent years, and, you know, despite a rocky economy, through our community needs grant program, we award about $500,000 each year to support arts and culture, education, environment, and health and human services programs throughout DuPage County. Our asset size has grown to $58 million, and that has doubled just in the last five years. And a lot of credit of this growth is due to the generosity of our donors as well as the strategic vision of our board of directors. And as part of that strategic vision, the foundation has taken a greater leadership role in the community around several issues. But today, I'm here to talk about one in particular, our Bright and Early DuPage Initiative, which is benefiting children who feed into District 200. Our vision with Bright and Early is that every DuPage child will be ready to succeed when they enter kindergarten. And we intend to go community by community, as resources are available, to achieve this goal. And we started right here in Wheaton. So why did we focus on early childhood? Well, I think the statistics are pretty compelling, and the return on investment is pretty great. It has been estimated that for every dollar invested in early childhood, approximately $7 to $10 is saved on reduced rates of participation in remedial and special education, lower rates of criminal justice expenditures, and higher graduation rates. In fact, at-risk children who do not receive high-quality care and education during the first five years of life are 50% more likely to be placed into special education. And we all know that's a significant cost to any school district. And they're more than 70% likely to be arrested for a violent crime. And I just heard last week that it can cost upwards of $40,000 a year to house somebody in jail for that year. So last year, as Joanne mentioned, we gave our first $75,000 grant to Metropolitan Family Services to support the Wheaton Warrenville Early Childhood Collaborative. And we're currently in the process of considering a second grant for this year. And our goal is to help this collaborative develop a coordinated system to address the barriers and issues that impact kindergarten readiness in the Wheaton Warrenville area. And we're also trying to get the message out to the community at large as to how important it is to invest in early childhood. Not only does it save the community money in the long run, it also saves a lot of heartbreak and struggles for families if they can identify developmental issues early in a child's life and get the appropriate interventions. With our funding, a project manager was hired, and she is coordinating the efforts of approximately 20 community partners, including School District 200, Wheaton Warrenville Libraries, Wheaton Park District, childcare providers and preschools, as well as many of the local nonprofit organizations. They're all working together to connect families, particularly those who are at risk, to local resources, and to provide critical school readiness information to all families. The collaborative has had some amazing results this last year, and they've put some sustainable practices into place to improve the kindergarten readiness for your youngest children in your school district. And now I'd like to turn it over to Teresa Nyho, who is the executive director of Metropolitan Family Services. And she can share some of the successes that the collaborative has achieved during this last year.
Oh, hi. I see a lot of friendly faces, having grown up and raised my children in Wheaton and attended the most wonderful District 200 school. So I'm really excited to be working in collaboration with District 200 and a number of other providers in the foundation in order to really help our youngest children become ready for kindergarten. So I do have to tell you, we actually work in a number of communities through a number of initiatives. We have services from early childhood through older adults. We have education prevention services all the way through pretty intensive psychiatric and mental health intervention services. And every community's a little bit different. One of the things, as we were searching and talking with various school districts, that was really compelling about District 200 is the way you think about being innovative, about really partnering with other entities and the data that you collect. I have to tell you that heads above your school district is Giulio here. I'm going to just say a shout-out to Giulio, because she's amazing. So when we put the grant together, it was, from my perspective, a no-brainer, because we'd been working with other school districts, and I couldn't tell the foundation where the needs in their community were. They didn't track that. I couldn't tell them in some school districts what level of kid, what percentage of children come in ready for kindergarten. District 200 tracks all of that. And it's just really exciting to partner with such an innovative and really, I think, dedicated school district. So in terms of the collaboration, you know, we came together in a very short period of time, a year and a half or so ago, brought a number of folks to the table and said, "Even if you don't think you have an interest in early childhood, you probably do." So if you're a provider of homeless services, you probably have kids that are 0 to 5 in the families that you're working with. If you're in the Park District, you're running preschool programs and little sports camps and things for those children. If you're one of the faith institutions we have, you have families with these young children, and in many instances, you have a preschool. And so we worked to talk about early childhood across a lot of domains, and what really did we need and what was missing. There were a number of things that were identified. One was a common language and a common screening tool. Different organizations were using different screening tools, and we wanted everybody to be using the same screening, so we were talking apples and apples. We also wanted to get the word out. Got to tell you, I was so sad. This all kind of came to be around the referendum time, and, ugh! I was, you know, a little disappointed in how things turned out, and I'm sure a number of you were as well. So part of my personal motivation was we can build a case for why early childhood is really important and what the outcomes will be, and maybe that might help the district down the road should you go to referendum again. Little personal goal, but that was my goal. We also talked about pockets in this community that really were isolated. And you know where they are. North Main Street, Marion Park, some parts of Warrenville, some parts on Roosevelt Road. Families who are doing the very best they can for their children, but who may not connect to school services, who may not have the knowledge or resources to connect to a preschool or quality early childhood experience. So everyone came together and set a set of goals. And I'm going to share with you that we had a number of community outreach events, and we had over 200 families participate in those events to learn about this collaboration and the resources available at the early childhood level. We hosted what are called play and learn events, and we had 71 parents and 75 children attend a couple of play and learn events that were hosted. We worked with, I think we worked with Eric, I'm pretty sure, on creating a kindergarten readiness brochure and looking at what are the district's measures for kindergarten readiness. And we've disseminated that to parents and partners in this collaboration. We made initial contacts with families in some of the most hard-to-reach areas, families who live in Marion Park, families who are refugees, who are settled by World Relief, and worked with the district. And you very, again, innovatively found a way to help meet those families where they are so you could get them registered for kindergarten, families who sometimes were off the radar totally for school. We did a lot of in-service for early childhood education providers. One of the things we heard from the Park District and the faith-based programs is we don't have the money or the time or the resources to get our staff trained. So they're not up to date on the latest brain research. They don't have the latest teaching methods. We did those kinds of things. And all together last year, we educated or provided some education workshops and services to 108 early childhood providers in the Wheaton Warrenville community. So we continue to build our partnership. And I just, I'm going to say one more thing, and then I'm going to turn it over. We also are very thankful to you for your partnership with us in Head Start. We've had a classroom in Johnson for the last year, and I think it's gone very well. And in conversations with the principal, Derek, over there, he's talked about really wanting to track the children coming out of Head Start. Well, this fits very nicely with the collaboration, because we want to be able to track children. So it's really a nice integration. But we're really looking to see, with all the bad press that Head Start's had, if the kids getting early childhood services through Head Start really do come in kindergarten-ready and stay on track with their peers. So that's something that's really new, that we've just been talking with the district administration about, and we're very excited. So right now, we're serving 66 kids from District 200 in our Head Start program in three different Head Start sites that we have. And we're excited to be able to expand that and then really integrate this more with the early childhood collaborative. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie, I think, or Joanne?
Yeah, I'll be Joanne, actually. You guys covered everything. Well, I was going to add some more with research, but you both ladies have done such a beautiful job that I'm just going to really reiterate and just say thank you so much for this partnership, because I know Stephanie will say the same when she comes up here. It's really just been a delight to be able to work and network with all the other resources and community members that we have out there. And looking forward to continuing to gather that data that we do with students. One thing that we did actually just add to our registration this year is getting some information from parents who are entering kindergarten, for students who are entering kindergarten age, and finding out if they've had formal schooling prior so that we can add to our data collection. And Giulio's been instrumental in that. And then we can also track that throughout the time of their time during District 200. So again, I can only just say this has been a great opportunity. We're looking forward to moving forward. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Stephanie.
Just really briefly, I don't want to reiterate what was already said so eloquently by the people before me, but I do want to let you know that as part of the collaborative, we did look at the way we're going to make the most changes, that we have a unified message, that we coordinate our systems. And one of the things that we need to do is a paradigm shift. So what we did do is, as Teresa had mentioned, we identified one screener, which is the ages and stages screener. And what's wonderful about that is regardless of where a parent goes to screen their child, our message is, "We need to screen early, and we need to screen often." Parents need to celebrate their child reaching their milestones, and they also need to understand what is the next milestone so that they know their early warning signs if something is going off track. Because what research shows is brain development occurs at the highest rate in birth through 5. So that's where we're going to make the largest impact. So with that information, we also knew that there were barriers in District 200 for different reasons. People can't get to locations. Screening is often associated in a negative way, that there might be a problem. So there are online screeners that we worked together with, DuPage Easter Seals. If you go on the District 200 website and you look at the early childhood page, we now are able to screen children birth through the age 5. Once a parent fills out that screening questionnaire, which takes less than 20 minutes, then a member or a specialist of School District 200 or DuPage Easter Seals, depending on the age of the child, will then report those results back to the parent. What's wonderful about that is that information will follow the child, and the child will always have the same type of screening device. So that common communication with the parent is easily understood. And then also between agencies, it's understood to help support those children. Also, I just want to share another unexpected outcome, I think, is we all do really well in our own silos, and we all communicate with certain agencies, but we really weren't communicating with a lot of different agencies. And through this collaboration, I think one of the things that we found is everybody's taking joint accountability for the children in our community. So it was wonderful when World Relief provided interpreters, District 200 provided the technology and the assistance through screening. And then we also had to Page Easter Seals follow up on the screening and communicate back to those families who spoke a different language. So I think we're reaching families there. I definitely see that there are added value to everyone in our collaborative. We just had a situation the other day where someone spoke Arabic, and they weren't following up on medical information from a doctor. So we asked our providers and everyone in our organization if somebody had a resource. Well, what was wonderful about this resource is they would provide interpreters. The interpreters, in return, would get service hours that they needed for their class. And then it also empowered parents that in the future, they could go ahead and contact this agency and then have that free interpretation in the future. So it's not only providing resources in the here and now, but also empowering parents. And I think that's one of the things the collaborative has allowed us all to do in our community. So we just want to thank you for helping our future leaders, decision-makers, to make it a stronger community for all of us.
Thank you. As we've gone through the Engage 200, certainly a common theme is really collaboration and partnerships. And that's a wonderful example of pulling all the resources to benefit the entire community. So thank you very, very much for that. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Dahlquist. You know, we appreciate you coming tonight and all of you award recipients. However, we do understand that school's out, and you might want to play. You might want to just have some free time. So we will not be offended if you choose to leave. You don't have to sit through the rest of our meeting. We will not not be offended. But thank you so much for coming, and congratulations again. Okay, next we have our consent agenda. I'm sorry. Next we have our consent agenda, and there are 14 items on our consent agenda. Acceptance of gifts from the Jefferson PTA. Acceptance of gifts to Sandberg Elementary School. Acceptance of gifts to Franklin Middle School. Approval of revised policy 7.100, health examinations, immunizations, and exclusion of students for public review and comment. Approval of high school ELL materials. Approval to purchase high school ELL materials. Approval to post high school junior English curriculum. Approval to add serious safety hazardous bus route. Approval of mileage reimbursement rate for the 2014-2015 school year. Approval of the resolution ascertaining the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed on public works of said school district. Approval of the SNAP vending contract rule. Approval of bills payable in payroll. Approval of minutes, May 24, 2014, closed. May 28, 2014, closed. May 29, 2014, special meeting. June 4, open and closed. And approval to dispose of recordings of closed sessions prior to January 2013. And approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members wish to have removed? Okay, then I will take a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
Move the, approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Mr. Roman.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Are there any questions on any items on the consent agenda? Any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Sander, will you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kike Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher? Yes, motion. Consent agenda is approved. We have two action items tonight. Mr. Matheson, you're showing up with absent.
You are clearly here. Refresh your screen, please.
The little arrow up at the top near the, the curvy arrow.
That's true? Okay, good. Then we're good for her. You're not logged in. You're not logged in. I can't read that. Okay, click right here. It's logging out. Log you right back in again, and see if that resets. So just do your regular login.
I'm always ready to fill some time while there's something. I just wanted to really commend. I was looking at the junior high school, not junior high, but junior high school English Language Arts curriculum. It is so fascinating to read through that. And there's so much that our teachers will have to cover. And it's amazing that they had to think through all of those points and figure out when, when that's going to happen. But I loved that there was emphasis on the beauty of language. And I learned that there was a book called Tough, Amazing Sentences, I think it is. Very interesting. So I commend that to all of your reading if you want. But it was great to read that, so good job.
Any other comments while we're waiting?
You should be in now, Mr. Matheson.
Mr. Roman?
With respect to that curriculum, is it true that the standards that are being adopted now, or composed being adopted, fewer than the standards that existed before? Like it was for, like, math or...
Yes, they are fewer in number. However, if you look at them, there's a lot involved with each of the standards. So when there are fewer in number, the scope of some of those standards, you could spend weeks studying and delving into. So yes, there are fewer, but especially as we haven't had all of the more rigorous standards for the years beforehand, that still is a lot to cover in that course.
Okay, are we ready to move on now? Is everybody voted? Okay, that's all right. Okay, we have two action items. The first is approval of the workers' compensation renewal, workers' compensation insurance. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mrs. Swanson. Is there any discussion?
I was just wondering if somebody could explain how the adjustments, audit adjustments, return of contributions, all that stuff happens after we get the price for these things? Is that an easy explanation that somebody like I could understand?
Sure.
Which question you want me to answer?
Stop saying you can't let yourself... Thank you, Mr. Gambiani. The pool, as mentioned in the report, is made up of 70 school districts. And there's an executive board that goes through. It's made up of numbers of school districts throughout that group of 70. I think there's seven or nine. I used to be on it a while back. And the school, the executive board will go through and review past claim years and loss years and look at it and see if there's, and this is the beauty of pools, when you see a return or dividend back is than when you pay. Paying with conventional insurance companies, you pay your money and it's gone and forgotten. But with these types of setups, you're able to, if the executive board, or as they close out years and realize losses that are underneath what it was funded to, then they can return that dividend back to the school district. So the executive board will make that decision annually before it comes to the full board, which means all the school districts meet in May. And then they propose that and that's voted on by the all the school districts to accept that dividend return. Audit adjustments are just looked at for the purpose of payrolls and how much our payrolls came in versus what we said they were going to be. And then they make any adjustments because the claims or the billing for it is based on the type of worker. We have kind of a teacher group. There's a group for maintenance and custodial. And then there's a group for bus drivers, which we obviously don't have any. So they'll look at our payrolls and make sure they match up with our estimates and then adjust their bill according. I don't know if that's the answer to this.
So we get a cost and then we get the adjustment to that and we're approving the adjusted costs?
Yes, we're approving. We're approving the, I mean, for the purpose of the board to see what our actual, if we had no audit adjustment and no dividend return, then we know what, you'll see what our actual premium would be. But what it will go into our budget and when we're asking you to approve this with those adjustments made. Probably worth noting too that the board's kind of entering this up because the IASB board or pool that was out there with us was actually having to do calls on school districts and some school districts because of very large claims. So if that year is underfunded, there is the ability for calls and adjustments as well. So we, those do happen from time to time. You have bad years. You may get a call on that year. If you're in the pool, you could get a call on that. In other words, if we were to leave the pool, let's say, and five years down the road, there's a call on this year, we would still be on the hook for that even though we gave five years away from the pool. Just want to mention.
And some of this is about a 2.27% increase from what we approved last year.
On the bottom line?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll, please? Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I need to abstain on this. We do work with this.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar? Yes, motion approved. Our second action item is approval of liability insurance renewal. I'd like to have a motion in a second to approve the renewal of our liability insurance.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Broman?
Second.
Second Amendment, Mrs. Cackill, is there any discussion?
Mr.?
Mr. Farley?
I just want to mention one thing that's not in the report. The pool this year is head change or deductible for school districts that have schools in flood zone A. They've increased the deductible from 2,500 to 75,000 because of the large number of claims they've had over a time period. As you recall, Bauer Elementary School is in the flood zone A. We did raise the BRRRR over there and we are working with the county and the insurance company to get the school taken out of the flood zone A. So we're not in that deductible. We're having that exposure, as it were. We do buy national flood insurance to cover because it isn't a flood zone A, but we are working with the county to hopefully get out of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farley. Are there any other questions or comments? Then Mrs. Sender, will you call the roll, please? Mr. Broman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I'm going to abstain again.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar? Yes, motion passes. We now have some oral reports. Mrs. Dahlquist, could you get us started with the budget update?
Sure. I'm just going to immediately turn it over to Mr. Farley and he has a brief budget update for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Dahlquist. I'll try and give her. Just wanted to give the board some update on the budget. As you're all aware, the budget process is a 12-month process, but I want to kind of key in on some timeframe here from January through today because a lot has happened, most recently as it impacts our revenues because the state has taken some actions. So I want to review all that. Board's aware in January, we asked to start the budget process and then we immediately follow that up with the committee of the whole meeting where we go through the five-year plan, give the board some indication of what the future might hold based on assumptions we're making. Do that presentation every January. Everyone's well aware that we did have projected shortfall coming up for this year and we discussed how we're going to balance the budget. That's the goal and we're working towards that. And staff's working hard. Departments have been working to make adjustments through staffing and other ways to make sure that we meet the goal of a balanced budget. And from March through the end of May here, departments and schools have been working on their individual budgets and passing that information along to the business office as well. Jumping into the state of Illinois, you can't pick up the paper without reading about it and seeing what's going on. What the state ultimately ended up doing was pass the budget that basically is a status quo. That's how we're at this year. Everybody sees the light at the end of the tunnel. The tunnel is a train tunnel. The income tax sunset increase is set to sunset here on January 1st of 2015. But the state is, I think, kicking the can down the road a little bit here. They're going to wait for the elections and then address it probably in the veto session. But our proration for general state aid came in at 89%, which is what we had put in the forecast model for next year. If you recall, we had 85% beyond that for the following four years. But our 89% is in place. For the mandated categorical funds, especially in the area of special education, the state has a requirement similar to what we do called maintenance of effort where it comes to the funding of expenditures associated with special needs students. Your idea, Ms. Panopoulos, could speak probably in great detail about that maintenance of effort. We as a school district have to meet that maintenance of effort in order not to lose funds, as does the state government. So the state has a lot of funds out of MCATs or a lot of funds to the mandated categorers to make sure they meet that maintenance of effort. How they're doing that, they're deferring payments owed to vendors and some other creative financing at the state level to make that happen. Transportation is being kept at the same level as this year. Board's aware they've been funding special ed transportation. That funding has maintained throughout the years here, but the regular transportation funding has dropped significantly. We're down under 400,000 now in our regular transportation funding, which where we were up around 2 million a few years in the not-too-distant past. So that continues to be an issue for us. One piece of action, it's not related to the budget, but it's related to action that the legislature took. The TRS board, and you've heard me speak to this, for our federal grants, has decided a few years ago that they are going to make school districts contribute a far greater number to TRS for salaries in federal grant programs. Out of those grants, that goes to TRS. The increase went, you know, the normal contribution for the employees, 9.4%. So the school district makes payments on behalf. And the shortfall of that in the eyes of TRS was around 28%. So we were paying over 30% of TRS fed. This is money that comes out of the grants that could be spent in other ways for children and those programs and services that these grants are meant to enhance. And it wasn't happening because a lot, and subsequently, we moved a lot of certified salaries, it's only for teachers, out of those federal grant dollars and used it for aides and other ways to pay for things because it was so high. Well, the TRS board finally thought, well, enough's enough. We're going to make it more of a reasonable contribution and reduced it to 7.4%, down from about 35%. Well, the legislation down in Illinois, in the state of Illinois, Springfield, I think that was a good idea. So they passed legislation that bumped it back up to 33%. So this is all, obviously, all happened here towards the end of May. It's lost a little bit in the budget discussions and some of the state of Chicago pension discussions. So TRS just sounded a bullet on it. So we're anticipating that's what the case, what it's going to be for next year. So now we have to, we adjusted to 7.4. Now we're adjusting back into the 30% range. So unfortunate, the TRS board was overruled by the state legislature. I don't think they're very happy about it, but they may have created their own monster. You may have saw a lot of information, I think it was today after our finance seminar on May 7th, not our, our community engagement seminar on May 7th about funding and finances in the school district. The details were released by the Illinois State Board of Education surrounding Senate Bill 16, which is a bill that was supposed to create fair funding for schools in Illinois. The fair funding was going to cost the school district $10 million in state funding, extensively wiping out a large majority of the funds we received. It was going to be prorated over three or four years how much we lost, but it was going to, that's a pretty quick timeframe to lose that amount of money when you consider the amount of money that we've lost over time from the state already through general state aid and some of the categorical finance work prior. So Senate Bill 16 was voted and passed by the Senate, but it never got anywhere in the House. It's still out there. Again, you never know what the veto session may bring. But I think we, as a school district and some of our fellow school districts in the area, have to keep a watchful eye on that and make sure that something doesn't happen there. Chicago had a piece of the pie they were losing as well as far as the block rent they were receiving. So there's obviously some politics, like there isn't anything tied to this legislation. So I kind of wanted to make sure that we're watchful of that and realize that, you know, $10 million in state funding is on the line and could go away over a short period of time. The last piece is relative to the state's pensions. Board's aware pension legislation was passed. There was a mid-May effort to have a state put into place and I think it was probably tied indirectly to the impact of the reduction of the contribution of employees, the reduction from 9.4 to 8.4, which was part of the wrangling to make this legislation legal in the eyes of those that passed it. We're not, if that would have gone into place and we would have had to start enforcing that here in the school year in the 8.4, and then the legislation would have been found to be unconstitutional, it would have been a nightmare going back and trying to recoup that money, especially for those that had left the district and didn't make those contributions to TRS as well as figure out a way to go back to our staff and tell them we were going to have to put it back into place. Some districts have talked about creating escrow accounts and still charging it, but as it stands, the judge did put a stay in on that. So while everything's in a holy pattern, we're still anticipating this legislation to probably take a year to a year and a half. It'll end up in the Supreme Court and we'll see where it goes. Again, the last piece, and I think it's worth mentioning again, is the state income tax sunset here in January. We'll see what happens in the elections and then what happens in the veto session. But they could make an adjustment to their budget. There was a lot of speculation. The budget they passed in May was going to be a six-month budget with the sunset staring them in the face. But they did pass the budget, but it could be changed. If that state income tax is not continued, then they could, then that could be part of, obviously, the discussion, the wrangling that goes on down in Springfield and that area. We are, as I mentioned, we are, that's enough of the state in my soapbox. We are in the process of finalizing the budget. We have a budget finance committee meeting, Mrs. Swanson and Mr. Matheson. We'll see the tentative budget prior to, as we'll go through the finance committee prior to the bringing of the full board in July where we'll post it. The plan is to post it July, the tentative budget. We will have the public hearing in August at our August meeting. Our September meeting will have approval. That's a little bit different timeframe we have had in the past because of how the July and August meetings have fallen. We usually, we have to have 30 days on public display of the budget before we have the public hearing. It's just kind of worked out that we have the 30 days with the July 9th meeting and then the August 12th meeting. We do have the time, we do have the time, 30 days to do that and that's a little bit more, makes a little bit more sense essentially to do it that way. So we're going to kind of go back to that mode. For this, we've, in the past, we've posted in July and then had the hearing the first meeting in September and then approved it in the second meeting in September. So just want the board to be aware that the timeframe changed a little bit. So that's a brief update, as requested, on the budget in the process. And I'll take any questions the board may have regarding the budget process.
I just have one, the...
I think I beat you. So just bottom line, putting aside what we don't, what we can't know what the state's going to do after the elections, the shortfall that we were looking at based upon the projection, I mean, that number is the same, greater or less than based upon what you just told us?
It's still a work in progress, but we do have, we do have departmental budgets in place that address the projected deficit. So we're anticipating coming forward with a balanced budget meeting. I think I've mentioned a few times as well, we're looking very seriously at our health claims. We are having a bad year in that regard and we're working with LACROSS who's our administrative service and will be accessing our benefits through. So we're working with them right now. So trying to see where we're going to land with that for next year. So we're still, that's probably the two areas in the current budget that are concerned is that and special ed placement tuition went over as well. So those are some areas we're still trying to refine and see where we're going to land. But again, the goal is to break forward.
Yeah, I just want to, a couple, you touched on a few of those that I was concerned about. Number one is the healthcare. I know we'll see it a little later, the financials as well. But, you know, that number's a, you know, tremendous over-budget item this year. And have we given consideration to looking at a, what I'll call standard versus a self-insured plan or other alternatives to possibly spread the risks among a bigger pool?
We have looked in the past at conventional and we do ask our board to look at conventional markets when they go out to market. We've looked at other, you know, we're large enough with over 1,000, you know, employees participating in the plan. And we have, we do go out to market and look at other, and we look at Cigna United Healthcare and some of the other ones to provide us our self-insure, for our self-insured plan as well as take a look at conventional. So we do ask them when they're, hope they're looking at it. It has not been as beneficial financially to do that, although we do ask them to look at that.
The reason again is we're so much over budget this year. And I think, I think we had talked about the potential of that being continuation of the ministry as well, but, you know, so as long as we give that consideration because it's a big number this year particularly. And again, the whole idea, if we can spread it through a bigger pool, which would be more of a conventional plan, maybe that would look better. As long as we look at it, that's the only concern. And also when Swanson was talking about the budget shortfall, we will see a budget that is balanced when we get to that point and the reductions that are necessary to achieve that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Bill, I just had one question on 16. As you said, that's kind of an unknown right now. But were we, did you take into account any amounts of money for our coming fiscal year? And if so, what amount maybe was allocated for that potential state bill, Senate Bill 16?
Right now, we're budgeting to the budget that the state approved. We are not taking, we did not reduce our, I think they were going a quarter of the time. I think they were going to take 2.5 million out and then it was going to go to 5. It was going to go pretty sequentially over three years. So I did not reduce our revenue stream by 2.5 million for next year for the purpose of the budget, based on that, I don't know.
Based upon my reading of Senate Bill 16, even if it's passed by the General Assembly in the veto session, it doesn't take in until the next school year. So wouldn't impact, my understanding even says it wouldn't impact our budget this year.
Any other discussion?
I think that, I'd like to... I think that, I'd like to just say that the, we will face a challenge to fund education in the state of Illinois as we, as well as our local district in this coming year. I believe that, I've heard many times recently that we're the 50th educationally funded state in the Union. The programs, you know, the cutbacks are coming with the impact of the tax rate reduction on the income tax and so on. It will be a challenge to pass this budget and balance it. It's going to be quite demanding, and we will have to look forward to some late nights of things.
Okay. Not much good news there, is there? Any, any further questions on, on the budget? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Farrelly and Mrs. Dawquist. We have three written reports, the monthly financial reports, the FOIA requests, and the wellness policy report. Are there any questions on the written reports? Okay, then we have, I'm sorry, Mrs. Swanson.
I, not question, but I just wanted to...
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to call your attention, I assume everybody has read the wellness policy report, and having been on the wellness committee since its beginning, I just wanted to commend Ms. Panopoulos and everybody who is on that committee. This is the most robust report we've gotten so far, and you've really gotten it organized so that we can actually see some results that can be quantified a little bit as opposed to simply anecdotal. So that is helpful, and I can really see a step up of activity by the schools. And in particular, I wanted to mention, I saw quite a few schools that were involving their staff in wellness activities as well, and to model that behavior for children, and I think that's, that's a great thing. And lastly, I wanted to commend Wheaton Warrenville South, I noticed, included some social, emotional aspects in wellness, which as a committee, we did talk about that there are many aspects to wellness. Even though this is, the policy or the requirement is largely driven by nutrition and the school lunch program, there's a lot more to wellness, and it was gratifying to me to see Wheaton Warrenville South putting a priority on that in terms of the addressing drug problems and such. So very good, I'm feeling very good about where the wellness, wellness activity is heading in our district.
Thank you. Are any other comments on the written reports? Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, just one comment. I was glad to see the, glad to not see so many comments on the portion of the wellness program that had to do with food in the classroom. I know, I think, Mr. Matheson, that was one of our early meetings where we got to vote on that, and it was probably one of the more challenging issues for, especially at the elementary level. So it sounded like most of the schools and teachers and parents are adapting to that well, and it's been pretty supportive, and maybe it's just a few pockets where it's a little bit more of a challenge, but I didn't see that come out as a big issue, so I appreciated that.
Okay. All righty. We have one discussion I have tonight, and that's our superintendent's search process. If you want to click on that draft, you could pull up, we could talk about it, but basically, you know, we're going to start out with a profile of qualities, and that's, that we'd like to see in a new superintendent, and we have already posted a call to action for community feedback on the website, so that if people, community members wish to provide input to that profile that is out there. Our interview process will include, you want me to go through the...
I think for the sake of the public, it's good to...
Okay, that's what I, thank you. I was thinking that, but I was not wanting to take up too much of your time. Okay. So the interview process says it's going to be, first, obviously, a review of resumes, and right now we have the resumes of 15 very qualified candidates to look at, so that's very, very encouraging. Dr. Harris provided a really good job in recruiting some top-notch people for us to look at, so I'm very pleased about that. Then we'll do some screening interviews, and then we'll administer and review personal strengths profile that the candidates of choice will fill out. We'll conduct secondary in-depth interviews, we'll do reference checks, we'll visit the site of the finalist candidates that, and that will look different than in years past because in the past we've, we've gone to them when school's in session. So we can see their schools in operation, we can see the climate. It'll be a little bit more difficult, we'll have to kind of see what that looks like when, when the time comes. We'll invite the finalists in for a district tour, and that district tour will be conducted by somebody from the board, and it will include meetings with the interim superintendent, the senior leadership team, select principals, and the presidents of our two collective bargaining units, so that the finalists can get a closer look for, for us, and we can have more input into, into, you know, the likes and strengths and weaknesses of the candidates. And we'll invite in a representative group of stakeholders from the communities, and I could get into all of those groups later on, but, and then, once that is all approved, the board will take into account all the information that is received from that process, and we'll prepare a final offer, negotiate a contract, and be done. So I'm trying to use a touchscreen, and I don't have a touchscreen. I used to, my computer at home have a touchscreen. Anyway, so that's, that's about it on the process. Any comments, any discussion on the process itself?
Just more of, I guess a confirmation, our objective would be to try to get that done by the end of August. Is that right?
Yeah, we have a very aggressive timeframe, but I'll tell you, we got a nice jumpstart on this because, you know, we have 15 candidates already, and it's, you know, June 11th, so we have a nice jumpstart.
And, Mrs. Anno, just for the record, this was a screening process or the interview process that was used four years ago when Dr. Harris was hired to, so that this wasn't created out of old cloth, this has proven record to it.
Right, right. There were just a couple of little modifications made, and I guess we'll have to change what the site visit and the district tour. District tour should probably be relatively constant, although the buildings will be empty, but we want to make sure that the candidate meets with those groups of people.
Eva, what you, I wasn't clear on the word you said, on the interview process will include, and then a list on the activities, for the finalist or the finalists?
We may have one. We may have one finalist, we may have two finalists. Last time we had two finalists, and it really came down to the end when we made a decision and chose Dr. Harris. So we'll just have to see how that all shakes out. It could be we'll have only one, it could be we'll have three. I'm hoping, you know, that things shake themselves out pretty well, but, you know, we're in, we're in great shape if we have more than one finalist, that's for sure. Mr. Paulson, Mrs. Kackel.
I just want to thank Eva for your leadership on this, and it's, I think, might have been a full-time job, and Jim, you as well, as just taking this right pole by the horn and just doing what had to be done, and timeline, and communicating with us, and it feels, you know, very good, and I'm very confident, and again, that Dr. Harris has, you know, done just exactly what he said he would do and more, so I'm confident we'll find a very good replacement.
Thank you, Mrs. Kackel.
I just, well, I echo Mrs. Kackel's comments, and I think all of us could echo them over seven times more. You really have done a great job, both you and Jim, but your communication styles have been really great, so I appreciate that. And so I want to make sure that the public is communicated to as well, and I haven't been on our website to see the profile that's there. I don't know if there's any verbiage around it, or how people are being invited to share their thoughts, but it seems to me with this being summer, this is another difficult aspect of things. We have our Engage 200 coming up in a week. I'm wondering if there's been thought to using that venue to also solicit input, and I say Mr. Roman before he shakes his head off, go ahead.
I was waiting for Board of Force, but I guess it's inappropriate. Yes, Rosemary, there'll be two short presentations made, I believe, is Erica here? We agreed it's going to be at the beginning of the community engagement session, Mrs. Ente Harson, my presentation. I'm going to emphasize to those who attend this next session or the community engagement session that we really are looking forward to getting the final report from the facilitating team in July, that it's so important for us to have that in hand, so that whatever candidate we have, finalist one or two, three finalists, whatever, they'll know what the community has identified as the recommendations to the board. And then the proposal is that Mrs. Ente Harson will then speak and give a report on the search status, and invite people to go to our website, where we'll see this superintendent profile and to submit ideas. There's a letter from Barb on the website with a link to his profile inviting people to participate. So yes, there'll be a presentation made at the community engagement session covering those two points.
Mrs. Lacko is pulling up the web right now, too.
So on the homepage of our website, under announcements, you'll see right there, you can click there, or you can also access it from the top of our page under Board of Education. Sorry, I need to leave that, just one moment. You go to, you can visit, I can miss it. You can visit superintendent search. I'm sorry. What did I do? You tripled it up. There's a, I don't, I apologize. That's okay, there's three different places that you can, so it's there. A letter, and then the profile.
That's really good. Can I, can I just suggest, though, the more we can put that front and center as opposed to even just a little link, I mean, this is summer, so let's hit them over the head with it. And I don't even know, at Engage 200, that's great if they want to take that and go back and go online, but maybe some of them just want to write out some comments, if there can be a place on that sheet that they can just turn that in, if that's how they choose to do it. I'm just saying, I think we ought to get every opportunity and every way that people like to communicate, we should allow them to do, so, just a dance floor suggestion.
I see Mrs. Lacko was shaking her head about making it maybe more front and center on the web and highlighting something.
We'll do some kind of graphic and scrolling pictures. I'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you. And then both, we could talk about it.
One thing in my work, at least, get to all parents, is to do one of those all calls across, like, at the end of the school year.
I've had the opportunity to do that a few times.
This might be an opportunity to do a good one. That might, a good topic, I should say. You know, that'll cover parents, that we always get into that issue of the community members who are not, don't have kids in the district, they're still parents, they just don't have kids in the schools, but that might be a good way to easily get that message out to a broad group of people. I do have one question on the process, and I think I talked about, talked to Mrs. Ente Harson about the finalist interview, which is one or two people, and it looks like we have about 13 different groups of people, I counted them, and that could be like 30 to 35 people. Can you describe how that process worked if we did that with Dr. Harris and what we're thinking about it? I don't know how you interview with 35 people.
Well, typically, what has happened in the past is we have asked the candidate to give a presentation, a short presentation, and one of the, a board member's typically kicked off the conversation, introduced the candidate, candidate gives a short presentation and fields questions from the audience. And usually it goes about an hour, I'm not sure that it went any longer than an hour, and we invite a lot of people to come, sometimes they don't all come, or they don't all send representatives. So maybe we'll have about 20 people, and that'll be the format, a very brief presentation, maybe five, you know, six minutes, and then 55 minutes worth of questions and answers. So it's not ideal, but...
Yeah, maybe interview is not quite the right word. It's really for us to gather some feedback from the, from the stakeholders, you know, so at that point, you know, some opinions about, you know, what we think is the strengths and weaknesses, but it's to sort of double check and see, is our, is our perception, our thinking, right about that? So it's more along those lines than an interview, and Mrs. Sander was reminding me that when people came in, they were given cards, similar to like when you go to League Women Voters event or something, so that if they had questions, and then there is a place to, is there a place to get other feedback, or is it just verbal feedback that we get from the stakeholders? Do you remember how that was done last time?
I thought we had forms, but I'll have to look, and I can't find them, but I thought we had forms, just people indicating strengths and weaknesses, not necessarily saying, you know, I choose this one, or you should hire that one, just something to give us their feelings about the people, recognizing that it's, it's our decision, but, but we want to know what the perceptions are of going in. So if, I'm sure we had something in writing, but if we didn't, we'll have something in writing this time, because I think it only makes sense.
Well, I think that's a great technique to use, because if you look at one of our, the last point on our profile, it says exhibit outstanding communication skills, including the ability to deliver oral presentations to a large group. I think that's a great opportunity for the candidate or candidates to show us how they would work within a group, so I like that format.
Any other comments, suggestions? Are there any reports from board members? Mr. Roman?
Yeah, I'd like to get, just a short report on Engage 200, and of course, kind of over draft, if he has anything to add. Facilitating team met on Monday of this week. We went over the draft of the recommendations, and the comments made during that meeting, the draft of the recommendations was being revised to address those comments, and then the draft report will be available next Wednesday at the last community engagement session. There'll be a review presented by both Scott and Liz about what's been covered in the first five prior sessions, and in your green folders, you'll find summaries of the first five prior sessions, so you can kind of refresh your memory about what's transpired. And then after that summary is presented, the workshop will start, where people will review the draft report and go over it section by section, saying either the, in essence, as far as the points in the report, or what was missed, and identify what was missed, and go through the report. Now, we do need to do some balancing there, because there was some discussion about, well, how do we prevent people at the table from sliding off into a discussion about superintendent search, when we want them to focus on reports, so we need to do some balancing there, Rosemary, to address that issue. Frankly, we do not, Erica, correct me if I'm wrong, we've had about over 800 participants, different people participate in the first five sessions. The consensus of the facilitating team is that at this session, we probably won't, we won't have as many people attending. It's the middle of June, school's out, and there is a certain fatigue factor that's factoring in. So we anticipate that a member of the facilitating team will sit at each table to kind of proctor that table and make sure they're moving along and not getting sidetracked. But perhaps it can be a balance where we can have maybe two minutes set aside for people to write down comments about the superintendent profile, we just need to work that out, but we do want people to remain on task with respect to providing their comments by the board. And the committee of the teams on schedule to deliver their recommendations to us at a board meeting in July, and they've done a tremendous job.
I echo all that. It just, thinking bigger about Engage 200, it seems like we've got three really key activities happening all within July, August, September. We've got a goal's probably going to be established for 2014, 15, a lot of which will be informed by the report we get from the community, we've got the budget being finalized, and we've got a new superintendent coming in. So it seems like those three, that three-month window is going to be especially important to try to get all those things into the best alignment we can, especially for the new superintendent. We talked about that at the facilitating team meeting, how important this, the message that they receive out of this report and how it's, you know, kind of prioritized. that they receive out of this report on how it's kind of prioritized or characterized is going to be to that new person. So I really look forward to the report. I think the facilitating team's been wonderful. The summer has set, summer's here, so I think everybody's looking forward to having that part of the process complete, but really, it's just the first step in.
A long journey.
A first big step in the journey.
Are there any other board reports?
Very short, very short one. I went to the ISB DuPage Executive Committee meeting this week, and we're planning our programming for the fall, and we're going to try to have Maui Askanam as our speaker, who I don't know if everyone's familiar, but he is a alum of our district, who was an immigrant from Ethiopia, I believe. He still has a sister who teaches in the district, but he went on to go to Harvard, give the keynote address at Harvard, has written a book, he has become a motivational and motivational speaker, and he's going to talk, hopefully we can get him, and he seemed very enthusiastic to come to DuPage since his roots were here, to talk about the effect that adults and educators have in shaping the lives of children, especially as he experienced it here. So with, last year, we did a lot of technology at the DuPage things, this year, maybe shifting gears a little bit for that first meeting at least. So I'm excited about it, and I just thought I'd mention it since he is someone very special to our district.
Great, that sounds like a wonderful program. Okay, are there any other reports from board members? All righty, hearing none. Topics for future discussion are obviously our budget and the report from the Engage 200 sessions. Our next regular meeting will be July 9th at 7:30 PM right here at the SSC. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? No? Okay, then we will have a closed session after the meeting, and the closed sessions items that are listed for possible action are collective negotiating matters and personnel items. I'd like to have a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of collective, no, I'm sorry, thank you, no act, no action is expected following the closed session. So I need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So.
Well, then, Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second, and Mrs. Kackel, Mrs. Center, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kackel?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes, we're now adjourned to closed session.
Please hold on one.
Make sure you vote to adjourn, please.